So, anybody is doing anything on the A governance side? Uh so, I mean earlier, at least people who used to work on the data side, they used to be part of data governance teams. Uh but similarly, A governance is becoming prominent, especially people who are working on the. A projects must have definitely heard about this A governance. So for A projects, uh there are three pillars. Of course, the first one is the development itself. And the second most important thing is evaluation. How do you evaluate? How do you evaluate? Earlier in the traditional A systems, we just used to do a testing R Q A. But in A world, right, evaluation is very, very critical that that plays a very, very prominent role. So that's a second key pillar. The third one is of course the governance. Earlier in the traditional system, uh the governance used to be there, but it used to be very, very light. Because the system used to listen to what we intended it to do, because it's all. Logic that we need to write, right? It's used to strictly follow that logic. But here, you're not writing any logic. So, so you are only trying to control what it is trying to do, right? So the controlling of the system makes uh. Uh then it's a key factor to make, in making sure that your system is successful. So how do you control is one of the key pillars in A. So that's, that's the reason A governance is the third key pillar uh for A systems. It's not only the organizations, actually the countries itself defining how the A governance should, should look like, so that itself speaks. How important this is. Even the U N itself came up with their, with its own charter, how they, how A system should behave. Even European Union has its own charter. Even India, China, Australia, Singapore, everybody has their own charter. And whoever is developing these A systems, right, they need to adhere, adhere to those standards. Okay. So why do we need A acts? Predominantly, it's to protect rights, fundamental rights and human dignity. Because slowly we are trying to give the control to A, okay? So in the months and years to come, right? We are going to lose the control and it's going to make a lot of decisions on behalf of us. Okay, so that is the reason it's important that whatever the decision it is making. It's protecting the human dignity and all the fundamental rights that are defined in the constitutions are protected. Okay. And ensure safety, whatever it is doing, right, especially in the medical world. So whatever it is prescribing, it should be safe for the individual to consume. And also it should be accountable if somebody, if it says something, right? It should explain why it is saying something with the reason and logic. So all the systems that are built, right? Or should have a feature called explainability. So at the end of the day, it should be able to explain why it is doing certain thing and why it took certain action. And the third thing is built to trust. So the people will use the system only if they, if they have a trust in their system, in that system, right? So it should be consistent. So when you ask something, it should give the consistent reply. You should not say something today and completely change its narrative tomorrow. But unfortunately, that's how A systems behave, but with some, some guardrails. Uh and some other frameworks, right? You should be able to control that narrative. So that's what these A regulations will dictate. Uh but at the same time, right, you should not restrict it so much so that the innovation would be lost. So just balance between innovation and the regulation. So that's what the balance that everybody is trying to achieve. So why this is important? It's a rapid A adoption, right? Especially the key regulator, regulatory sectors, the finance, healthcare. The employment uh stuff and the governance sector, right? These are all the key sectors where the regulation is uh. Applied and all the, all the governments are pushing to make sure that at least these. Industries are in forefront in adopting these A frameworks. So if you do, if you allow these A systems to grow without any frameworks. Or guardrails, right, then they will start doing this bias discrimination. And if you're trying to, somebody is doing, trying to do the surveillance, right, for, for a good purpose, then people can misuse the data and turn it, turn that into a bad purpose. So. So that is what everybody is afraid of. So global standards, the U United Nations, right, it came up with the unified international standards. Then each and every is trying to adopt the global framework and trying to customize it to their own geography or to their own country. Because each and every country rules, regulations, culture, little bit different, right? So everybody is trying to customize to their needs. So these are some of the major A acts. U A F, this is the most popular one. This is very, very comprehensive and very elaborate and there's a lot of thought process at twenty-two. And most of the other countries are also trying to understand what is A U U A Act. And trying to adopt most of those principles and practices into our own acts. And U A Act is, is very, very good. The, the next one is Singapore also A A verify, right? So that is also very comprehensive, very elaborate and. Uh. Very complete in all aspects. So that's what I noticed. Then US has its own regulation, China, India, Australia, they have their own regulations, such as. And these are some of the industry standard certifications. So earlier we used to have auditors, right? So people used to get certified. Their organizations with I S O certifications. Uh so likewise, A certifications are also becoming prominent. Especially N I S T A risk management framework, right? This is one of the most important frameworks. And it has certification, uh you need to sit through an exam, proctored exam, uh to get this certification. And A G P is also one of the good certification where it's becoming popular. So for A governance kind of a lead positions, right? They are asking for this A G P kind of a certification. And of course, I S O also has come with one certification. But these are the evolving certifications that are becoming popular. Yeah, so why certification matters? So I mean, organizations need to demonstrate their compliance in standards framework. So A has a lot of terms and terminology and definitions are different. They are trying to standardize those definitions, frameworks. So that the auditors, regulators across the world understands what, what each and every terminology of the A means. So it will be standardized across the world. Okay, so ma- market access is also very important. So if they are A certified, then. Half of their problems are solved. So the access becomes very easy, especially to the EU and other very highly regulated markets. And of course, you have that professional credibility, right? So if a person is certified and you're walking into certain room or conference, then whatever you say, people will listen. So global trends, so transparency, human oversight, rights protection, risk management, these are the broad themes. All these A acts are focusing on. And student professionals who are really want to build a career, career around A governance or A auditor, right? Even A architect also, it becomes very, very important because unless he understands these things, right, then he will not be able to design. And architect his A solution. At the end of the day, he needs to submit. Uh his solution to the A governance body, which is going to approve. So unless he understands what these regulations are, right, he will not be able to. Develop, develop it. So that is a reason it becomes very, very important even for technical lead and architects to understand what this is. So this is kind of a overview. I just wanted to get started, just to give a preamble. So now let me jump over to the quiz part of it. So this is where everybody needs to open their mics, okay, and. And answer what, what you think is correct answer. I mean, I made it very, very easy. Okay, so if you look at all the options, right, you should be able to easily figure it out. So I don't want to complicate the things. I made it very easy, but at the same time, you learn something at the end of it. So that is obvious to. So what is the primary purpose of U A Act? So anybody can tell? So please open uh your mic. So unmute yourself and speak up.
Option A.
Okay, anybody else?
I think option A is.
I think option A.
Okay, that's good. So I think that is the correct answer. Okay. So Y B is not correct, high risk systems are not banned, so. That is binding EU law. Why C is not? J D P remains enforced, the A act complements it but does not replace. Okay, it's all about organization at the end of it, okay?
Yes, uh so sorry to disturb you. Regarding uh E U Act, right? Uh do we have a similar kind of act in US or looks like in US statewide acts are there, right?
Yeah, statewide also, acts are also there. So EU works as in cohesion, right? So there is a reason they have a U A Act. Uh but US, right, so just like our country, their countries also. Have their own state powers, right? So state can override. I mean, they have to implement whatever the central government is saying, but they can write their own laws. So especially California is notorious for that. So everything they do, that they, they think they're just a separate country and they have their own laws and. Uh principles, so yeah, California is actually much stringent compared to overall US actually.
Uh look, it looks like a few organizations like Salesforce is implementing agent force, that is a, a A related tool. And in, in that case, how, how, what kind of rules they will follow, meaning. Uh across the globe, in each and every country, mo- most of the folks are using Salesforce. Uh let me take this as example.
Yeah, so that's what they have to adhere to the global stand. So there are global minimum standards, okay?
Okay.
That you need to adhere, then wherever you are operating, right, you need to adhere to those standards. So that is the reason if you notice, right, so whenever these Facebook or even Tesla or Open A, they are releasing the products, right? They will delete the release in EU for some days, okay? Because they need to get some of these things to be ready. Okay, so wherever the laws are a little bit, I mean, not so stringent, they will release it there. But EU, most of the products are getting released a little bit late. Because of the laws.
Yeah, yeah, understood, understood. Thank you, thank you, Srinivu.
Yeah. Okay, the second question. So anybody? Uh territorial scope it is talking about, so this should also be easier.
See, I was just thinking, it's.
Military systems, is it? So you had to read it carefully, used entirely outside the EU, so that doesn't fall the EU jurisdiction if it is used outside of the EU, right? So it's talking about territorial scope of the EU.
Domestic market.
External providers.
It, it, it will be a domestic marketer.
Uh but uh see, it's saying with no EU use, right? You had to read the complete sentence. So external providers.
External provider.
Okay, okay. Top of the U, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in the EU market, the second one is also personal use, is not really exposing anything. Military systems are already saying outside EU. Domestic market also is saying with no EU use, right? That's what, so yeah, unless it's implemented in that particular region, even for India, also India are supplies only if you are operating in India. Okay, so I think that is easy one. Okay, so what is A system definition as per the U A Act? I mean, there's no need to use E U A Act as such, but it's all common sense kind of a, a questions. Even if you write your own act, right, you will have these things in mind. So what is the definition of A system?
It will be rule-based software.
Okay, anybody else?
I would go with B.
Continuous learning, okay?
C is what I see.
Yeah, looks like, looks like C.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, C is the correct answer. So we will also see why others are not correct, okay? Yeah, so A, A you have defined A system, mission-based system that inputs to generate outputs, et cetera. So the, the B we had a little bit confusion and the A act does not require continuous retraining. Static models can still be considered A systems under the definition. Okay. Yeah, the rule-based are the traditional systems, right? So that anyway, when we write the rules, it used to listen to our rules, but the A, there's no rules. You're not really writing any business logic or anything like that there, right? Okay, then risk classification, which list correctly state the A acts risk tiers. Is it B? Yeah. Okay, yeah, so here people who doesn't know, or at least didn't read it, it might be a little bit difficult to tell because. All looks correct, but actually risk-based tiers is, it's talking about D, okay?
Yeah.
Minimal risk, limited risk, high risk and unacceptable risk. So what do you think the systems of unacceptable, unacceptable risk would be? So some of the examples are going to come in the next slide, but I just wanted to see if anybody has any idea. Me, prohibited systems, you cannot even put those systems, those kind of systems. Okay, so the system that will try to segregate the people, right, by race.
So bias, bias.
Yeah. Yeah, bias will be there in high-risk systems also, but they will be permitted with certain restrictions. But unacceptable is where it tries to segregate the people. Or if you try to put something on the social media, right, if you try to. Uh express your opinion and some, some systems flags you and says, I won't give you a law, right? So those kind of systems are completely prohibited. Okay. So we'll, we'll go through these examples in the next slides. Yeah, so which of the following is generally prohibited? Now you can understand and tell me. Which is a prohibited system? I thought this is an easy answer.
C one, that is exploitative.
So C. C it is, yeah, so.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's right. So A system that exploit vulnerable dislike either age, disability, economic situation. So those kind of systems are prohibited. Okay, education is generally not prohibited because we know why. Real-time remote biometric by law, by law enforcement has narrow uh use case. Strictly regulated and this can have an exception, not a blanket ban. But if a general, general population want to use this kind of biometric, it's prohibited, but since it's a law enforcement, it's allowed. Healthcare is also, healthcare I also categorizes the high-risk system, but it's totally regulated, but it's not banned like uh option C. Okay. Okay, social scoring provision. What is the A act where we're regarding social score? Again, it, easy to figure it out. What is the answer? What is the answer?
Public color is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, public authority scoring, that's right, yeah. Rest of the things, anyway, we know that these B C D are happening right now, so that itself shows that they are not prohibited. Yeah, state-type so- social credit. They are strictly about social scoring by public authorities that evaluates individuals or group based on social behavior or personal characteristics. Okay. Then facial recognition prohibition. Which facial recognition practice is prohibited? Okay. So what is the answer?
Under records scrapping.
Okay, anybody has any other answer apart from you?
I guess A.
Yeah, it's A.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think that is the correct answer. So Article five prohibits untargeted scrapping of internet CCTV measures. And border control exception because again it's a government entity. Law enforcement is also kind of a, a lot. Consumer devices, it's only your person, so there's no this then. Chartboard requirements, what is required for chartboard under article? Okay.
Disclosure requirement.
Okay, that's B. Okay, anybody else has a different answer?
So B disclosure.
Yeah, that is wrong.
Okay, yeah, that is a correct answer. So even though it's A system, it should be informed that the people are interacting with the, it's not a human behind the scenes, so. So C also, no blanket data retention is mandated. So conformity assessment is only for high-risk, high-risk systems. So this is categorized as a limited risk of all of all, right? Oh, so deep fake, so deployers of the deep fake must, what they should do?
Disposal.
Disclosure, okay. Any other answer? Okay, so then correct answer is that disclosure, that's right. So deep fake suppliers must practically disclose A generated and manufactured content. Transparency is required. And labeling is proactive. Okay, high-risk system, these systems are high-risk under Article six. So what is the answer here?
Regular person.
Regular person, yes, okay.
Yeah, four.
Four, okay. Yeah, so you have to just see the other things also to see whether. Those things are making sense or doesn't making any sense. Of course, here in this case, the answer is D. Okay, so data quality, which data quality is central to. High-risk A. So what is the answer? Yeah, quality standards. Yeah, so there is a lot of emphasis, there is at least a couple of chapters on the quality standards, on training, validation and system. Okay, so. Actually, especially people, people who are in the managerial roles, right, they should definitely read the U A Act. I think it's three hundred, four hundred page document. But really. You'll be able to understand what every government is trying to do, how concerned they are and how they want to control this A. Because nobody knows what's going to happen once it becomes, once we reach the stage of A J, A J, right, administer general intelligence. But they want to have those regulations studied before we reach there. Human oversights. Regarding woman oversight, what does it tell us? Human in the loop.
B.
Effective offset measures, okay? Anybody has any other answer?
B.
Please.
If it's certified, yeah.
So answer A is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So correct answer is B. So the option A is meaningful, even certification does not eliminate oversight duties. So still somebody has to monitor. It is adhering today, but we don't know how it is going to change, right? Tomorrow it might not adhere to. So there's a problem with these A systems, right? Because as the data changes, as it learns, because it's a continuous learning machine, right? It might change its color, it change its color, so it might change its opinion. So that is a problem. That is a reason you have to constantly monitor it. Okay, so what is the core element of risk management for the high-risk A?
Under the system.
Yeah, that's what we just now discussed, so. A continuous regulatory risk management system across lifecycle. So it's, that includes analyzing, evaluating, mitigating, testing and monitoring. So each of them is a separate chapter, actually, U A Act. So why does automatic logging is required for higher estate?
Accountable and addressable thing.
Right, yeah. So that's why the tracing is becomes important because if you want to understand what happened yesterday, day before yesterday. Somebody complained, right, some user or somebody complained. So unless you have this login enable, you will not know what kind of answers it gave. Each and every answer that the A system is giving is also logged somewhere. So even if the auditors ask tomorrow what happened one month ago or one year ago, you should be able to show them what happened. How the A system answered to certain questions one year ago and how it is answering today to the same questions, right? So is it becoming better or is it becoming worse or is it in trying to be biased in certain situations? All those things, to start with, after your testing, it might be neutral, but based on the data that you are feeding and the kind of decisions that people are making, right? Unfortunately, humans are a little bit biased, right, so the same characteristics, the A A also would try to invite. So that is a problem everybody is fighting with. So we should not have the A A system biased like you also. Okay, why must providers set up post-market monitoring system for a higher scale? So what is the correct answer here?
Under the smart.
Yeah, same continuation.
Yeah, same thing, yeah. Most important thing is it helps to feeding corrective actions. So that's what monitoring is able to safety go on, it's not commercial exploitation or marketing, so. So serious incident reporting, what is a serious incident duty about?
Mandatory reporting.
I guess.
Yeah, so whenever a serious incident happens, right, first report the authorities and the impacted individuals, that is the first thing that anybody needs to do. Then try to analyze why it happened, when it happened, how it happened, all those things comes later. But anything happens, you to in- inform the regulators as well as the individuals who got impacted. So that's what it is saying. Okay, so what is the obligation for providers for general purpose models? So general purpose models are nothing but the foundation models, what Open A A or Gemini, right? The kind of a general purpose models.
T.
Yeah, see, that's right, so it has to have a complete trading data summary and technical documentation. So the downstream providers can understand how to use that model fit for, fit for purpose. Right, so whether it's going to fit for their requirement, they'll be able to understand only based on this kind of a data. So there is a reason we have it. Sorry. So that is everybody, there is a reason everybody is obligated to publish model cards. Okay, so that gives, there is certain framework that you need to adhere to and you need to publish according to those framework, that model cards. So it will tell you everything about the model. So if you go to hugging face and login and C, right, so there is a model card for each model that is published there. Okay, systemic risks. For general purpose A A duty side, window systemic risk applied. Yeah, I think it's very obvious, all the answers is written very, very elaborately, I guess. You see it.
Yes.
So what is the answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. So possible threshold criteria, then enhanced testing, then risk mit- risk mitigation. So why other options fail? So these are not very much learned, the other answers. Okay, so this is an interesting question, what is the maximum penalty, right? For if you I mean put prohibited A A in into in the public domain. Or even internally if you use it and it's going to influence, right? Decisions of the customers, or decisions of the employees, or decisions of anybody else, right? Here it's internal system, system, it's categorized the prohibited A, you should not put that in internally as well. Okay. So what could be the maximum penalty for this?
Maximum number, yes.
Option D.
Yeah, D, yeah.
Yeah, so imagine, so it's saying up to thirty five million or seven percent of global turnover, not even if it is happening in U A, it's not even U turnover, it's talking about the global turnover, whichever is higher again. Generally, we see whichever is lower, right, so whichever is higher, so if it's a one billion dollar company. Then seven percent means seventy million dollars fine it has to pay. So that stringent the penalties are, yeah, the option D is correct. So there are three type penalty structure. Okay. So what is the U A office functions?
Looks like C.
Yeah, so it supports implementation, supervision and enforcement, coordinates with national authorities and can issue guidance and codes. Okay. So it's not going to, there is no certify certification of each model, okay? So it's self certification by organizations themselves. Mean making sure that it's following the framework that is published. Of course, there are private companies who will certify, right, so just like we have that I S O certification and all that stuff, right? So there will be private organizations who will be certifying. If you, if any organization wants to have a third party certifying. Without any influence, right, so that what most of the enterprise organizations are trying to do, have a third party. Organization certify their A A systems. A A Act and G D P, G D P R, right, so G D P R is also one of the prominent ones, especially in the EU. How does A A Act interact with G D P R?
Complementary, I mean, A, option A.
Yeah. So G D P R, mo- most of us know that it's all about personal data. Okay. So A A Act is about safety rights. And compliance. So it's a kind of a complimentary. So what A A Act focuses on and what G D P R Act focuses on, right, so these are differences. Okay, this is an interesting one, what is A A regulatory sandboxes?
B.
A.
D. Okay. Oh yeah, the correct answer is D. So this is mostly used for SMEs and startup. Because they don't have such a kind of a skill set of people. Okay. To make sure that what are the A A systems that they are developing adhere to that, so instead of that, at least in the EU, they regulators have developed their own sandbox. Which the sandbox adhere to all the, all the acts as such. So that the A, these SMEs and startups can come and experiment in the sandboxes, so, so that they are compliant. Uh, by default. Otherwise, they would not have resources and know-how. These small startups, so. There is a reason that we got. So what requires high risk A, it has to meet which criteria to pass?
Looks like C.
Yeah, C.
Yeah, so, so this is what we need to think about, right, so how do you really test for accuracy? How do you test for robustness, how do you test for resilience? Once you develop a system, right? So here there are a lot of frameworks, I mean, there are, again, these are implemented as libraries in Python itself. Okay, so there is a God rails dot A, that's a good framework, there is another thing called Giscord. Another framework, there's another framework called Ragas. Okay. And these frameworks are getting updated on a monthly basis, actually. So people who are working in the A A world, right, especially the architects, product managers, project managers, they really need to think, given the context, given the problem that they are working on, right? How they need to test accuracy, robustness and resilience. Okay, so then individual decision-making rights. Then high risk A makes decision about individuals, must, what must deployers do? Okay. Anybody else?
What is meant by deployers here?
Deployers are nothing but who are implementing the systems.
Yeah, the, the only looks.
This D, D is. Yeah, they, they look so. In the wording way than from what we understand, so it looks kind of a correct only. So transparency obligation, PR notification to individuals when A A systems are used in decision-making and human oversight, which we already discussed. Contestability rights, so if a person is denied, right, loan or an employment, right, you would have the right to appeal. Okay, and he has the right to understand how A A made the decision, that is a reason A A should be able to explain whenever a decision is made. So explainability becomes important. And record keeping, so documentation of patients and process for accountability and review. If somebody goes, goes and complains to any regulator, right? So then the regulator will step in and ask for the evidence. So that is a reason the transparency, transparency and human rights are going to play a big role in the A A systems. So what, which statement about law enforcement use of a remote biometric identification is accurate? So what could be the correct answer here?
Looks like B.
B, okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think looks like B.
So what do you think about narrowly defined cases?
I'm supposing like biometric identification is, uh, like how in offices you can maybe put a fingerprint or maybe they will scan your face. So narrowly defined cases may be like for a specific office in the corporate office, so, uh, like how.
But it is talking about public spaces here.
Yeah, the option B says that it is broadly prohibited, but like narrowly defined cases, for example, like if there is a specific section in the public space, which maybe only some designated officers can enter with prior authorization, so.
No, no, so this is talking about using the okay, remote biometric identification, so even in public space also, if you want to enter a park, right? They can also use that in public places with prior authorization.
Okay. Maybe there's a paid service, something like that.
Yeah, probably yes. So real-time R B A in publicly accessible space is broadly prohibited to protect privacy and fundamental rights. But of course, today we have these cameras everywhere, right? So, but how that, uh, thing is processed is a debate. Whatever that is there in the images and everything, right, so how that is processed? Uh, we have around regulations around that, only law enforcement, the artists can use it, especially to uh, control disturbances, right? Public safety, those things. But for this also, the judge or somebody has to authorize, so. So that's what this U A A, the have checks and balances in place whenever it allows. Okay, so education, employment, A A risk. Why are A A systems used in education and employment often high risk? So these, these systems are also categorized as high risk.
Yeah, C.
The.
Yeah, C. Yeah. See, looks very obvious, but why they want to, why the character is as a high risk system is what we need to understand, so because ultimately employment is one of the primary things, right, so in hiring, if it's making those decisions, right, without any human supervision, that's a big big problem, because if even if it tries to do some kind of a bias, right, then a legitimate candidate is rejected. So that is a big problem, even the same thing applies for promotion, even for exams, if it, if it evaluates your answer in a certain way, even though it's correct, right, and gives you less marks, then you lose the opportunity. Right, so to join a good college or even to get into a good job, so that is a reason these things are categorized as a high risk systems. So these are life-changing impact potential, so that's what the U A Act fast does. Migration and border control A. So this falls into which category?
Is it a high risk?
It would be high risk.
Yeah, so it's a high risk classification. So decision effect liberty movement and asylum rights, right, so if the border inspector decides you are not allowed, then see the impact and if that is, the decision is made by A A, so it's even more troublesome, if you don't understand why it made that decision. If you don't understand why it made the decision. So life-altering consequences. And it could impact a vulnerable population, so. So these are really, really high risk system because it's going to change the life of a person based on the decision, right? So minimal risk A examples, which one of them is a minimal risk?
B.
B. Assistant spelling suggestions. Okay.
Yes, B.
Okay. Yeah, so that's correct, but we need to understand the other things also. So the emotional recognition in schools, right? That's a prohibited practice. And credit scoring, it's categorized as a high risk. Even the predictive policing, right? That's also categorized as a prohibited, uh very strictly limited in case of uh uh law enforcement.
Yeah, so the, Sini, credit scoring side, we can, they can adopt L L M's actually, automatically they can identify. If anything of fault um scoring mechanism, they can rectify. Right? So recently I came across this same situation actually. So I, when I went for uh uh loan, home loan. So though I have some good credit score. What happened, a few, few accounts actually came into my account, my C bill. Okay.
Okay, okay.
What happened, I reached out to third party, okay, third party. This is my experience, this is helpful for you guys. Um to implement or in future if you can suggest something, right? So this is best example I faced actually recently. So because of that, I, I did not get the loan approval actually. So what happened, I, I, I had to reach, I don't know whether there is some kind of agencies which can resolve our um these civil, civil issues actually. So third party, third party team, what they did, they, they worked with the civil team. And they have resolved that actually, because they reached out to particular bank, okay? So and through civil, and they came to know that these particular accounts are not mine. They figured out and they removed from my bill. So this, for this, it took actually ten days, actually, ten days. So by the time when I went for uh buying the house, the registration, already I paid some amount actually. So the registration has to push actually, right? So because of these issues, that was a high risk for me actually, right? So half the money I paid and if they simply say reject the deal, then that will be a big risk for me, right? So these kind of things, right, positively, they can adopt the systems, these credit trading people. Adopt the customer rectify on their own without a customer, say customer may not look at it actually internal. He will just simply look at the score, but he may not go the internals detailed report. So, so the, whenever we, we will go for the loan, they will detail the, the um the loan issuing authority, they will go for detail check actually, right? So that time only we, we will come to know, otherwise we won't, we don't go for a detailed report. So this is a best example where they can adopt L L M's for this. So just want to bring up this.
Yeah, so that's what we are trying to discuss, right? L L M has a good behavior, bad behavior. Good behavior is if some record is trying to enter into your system, right? It recognizes that is not your transaction, then it can reject it and make sure that it doesn't get into your credit history. But if L L M goes rogue, right, then it can put A's transaction into your account, your transaction to A's account. We don't know what it's going to do. So avoid the L L M going rogue is all these kind of the frameworks.
Yeah. Yeah, rather a customer comment complaint, so it can give the, some suggestions to the uh agency so that they can, they can check it actually, at least that, that level it can do.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so thanks for that example.
Yeah, yes, but it is not very risky, like your personal information going in this L L M.
See, today, when the systems are making credit scoring, right?
Right.
And there is a civil organization, so all your data is going there. So somebody is holding the data. So do you think it's not risky?
Uh but it's still, that is like designated authority, right? So with them, it's okay, yeah.
So the L L M also, we need to think that way. So if it is sitting on a credit scoring system, right, L L M, so that the L L M is also controlled. Right? Using the C U A kind of an acts.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not something somewhere outside of the system, sitting somewhere in cloud and doing all these things. It will be part of the system itself, civil system itself.
Yeah, yeah, then, then it should be good, yeah, yeah, if it is. Yeah, they only implement that actually internally.
Okay, so what is market surveillance authorities do?
The, this one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, it's very easy to figure it out, yeah. So that's what they do. Compliance monitoring, continuous whole set of A systems, coordinated inspection, corrective actions, order for remediation. So they can, they have the other two to even uh recall non-compliance system, they can ask them to shut down that system as well, so. So SMEs and startup consideration, what does the A act consider SME startups? So what do you think is the most correct answer?
B. That's B.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so the correct answer is B. So core principle is fundamental safety rules apply universally. So there is no, there is no exceptions there, whether it is SME or startup or whatever that may be. But the act recognizes the difference, different capabilities and resources of SMEs. And provide, and provide proportionate support without compromising essential protections. Okay. So that is the reason they have set up that regulatory sandboxes, so that these guys, there is no need for them to set up a separate environment, which would adhere to that A acts, because that will be expensive for them for a small organization. Okay, there are, of, of course, apart from that, there is SME specific support, right? So enhanced guidance and resources, they might also give some resources also. Reduce administrative burden wherever possible. But SME or startup, nobody is exempt as such. So technical documentation importance.
C.
C. Yeah, so. It will help on the conformity, the traceability, the understanding of design, decision, data and controls. Right, so who are you using, even for the regulators, even for the customers, even for the downstream systems. So that is the reason, becomes very important, uh technical documentation. So what is the real world testing?
The B.
Yeah, B. The. Yeah. Correct, so, yeah, so real world testing, right? So sandbox is just for your development and not even the SME and startups, right? Again, they need to put uh under real world situation before they put it in the general topic or production. Okay, so. So that it becomes very important. So defines a what's? Oversight, maintain, right, production, innovation, balance, etc., etc. So what is this deploy data quality response? So what deploy do, they detect data quality issues affecting customers.
It's the.
The. Yeah, so they should evaluate impact, adjust usage in form provided and implement mitigation for instance. Okay, so this is all they need to suspend if necessary. Okay. Yeah, so these are all the things that I had, so I know it, it's very, very simple, but if you try to prepare for this exam site or the certification, it delves into so complex that you really need to think very hard before you answer, because all the answers look same. And all the answers looks correct. Okay. So I just wanted to give you a glimpse of what are all the areas that are being covered in the U A act. So this is a small attempt towards that.
These questions appeared uh earlier, Sini, or just we are prepared, like kind of questions you have prepared.
Yeah, so anything that I prepare, right, then again I take the charge if it is help, right? So if you give a syllabus, right, detailed syllabus, and ask it to create the questions, it is created.
Okay.
Then you can give complexity also, simple, medium or complex.
Okay.
So and the distribution also, if there are number of topics, right, you need to make sure that it is distributing. But of course, then again, each and every question you need to review. And if you feel that is not right, then you can instruct it to change that question or modify the options, something like that. So today, right, and nothing we are doing from scratch, so we are using these tools and generating the baseline, then refining it. Whatever we do, that is, that's what I'm doing nowadays. I'm sure everyone of you also also doing the day, same right? If you are project manager, first iteration project plan is only giving. You are just refine it based on your experience, technical design documents or business document. Fifty, sixty percent of it, it is only producing, right? Even the code also the same, testing also the same, so. Everything that we do nowadays, thirty, forty percent is generated by.
Nothing we are, only in the loop.
Yeah, human in the loop. Pretty much in the loop, otherwise, sometimes it gives a very wrong answer, you'll be surprised, why it's giving such a wrong answer, but, but it's really helping to cut you down, cut, cut down the time. The same type thing I just prepared in one word and a part. So totally generated fifty questions, I removed some of them because it was not relevant. Uh and it went all over the place sometimes, focusing on only certain topics. Then I need to redistribute the questions because different topics. Yeah, but we had to work with it, so, but it will do a decent job for sure. So anything, any, any, anything you want to discuss? Any insights, anything that you are doing on the governance side? How we are doing, what you are doing, or everybody is just getting started. Not sure where everyone is, but.
For a senior people, kind of technical managers, uh what do you suggest to Sini? Like how, how we can um um look at the career uh perspective?
Yeah, so I showed you the certifications, right? So let me bring that up once again. So, so those are the things that you need to do. So even if you don't give the certification, right, because some of these certifications are eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, okay? But at least if you go through the course material, right, then you will understand. Okay, pretty much. What, what did you say? But if you give certification, right, if you do the certification, then it will give you that credentials, you can put against your name, right? A A G P certified or N I S T certified.
Okay.
Actually, M I T also has a very good risk framework. So I mean, again, it's available on its website for free. It's also in the Excel sheet, I think, but it has twenty, thirty sheets, I guess. It's a very, very exhaustive. So you would just pick and choose what is learned for your project. Right, but it will just give you a standard framework. See, what I see most of the time is people are just developing the applications, left, right and center, but they are not evaluating. Just like we discussed, right, for resiliency, trust. They are just not uh making sure, sure that they are adhering to those guidelines or frameworks. Evaluation is going to be very, very key. Still the systems are in pilot stage, pre-production stage. Right, so again, most of the regular industries, they are still not implemented at a production scale as such. Except the tech companies, right? But the insurance industry, banking industry, retail industry. So they are not implemented in a large scale. They are using those solutions that are coming as part of the product themselves, like as a feature. But they are not implemented in build solutions. Uh extensive. Everybody is doing P O C's kind of a pilot, but not at a production scale.
Any product uh has come in the market, say, like using L L M? Uh. I see code reviews products are there. Order uh suggestions, quality standards. Now, but in other, other applications like banking, pharma. Medical sites.
Yeah, so there are a lot of startups that are coming up with products, right? So even in India also, there are seven hundred, eight hundred products, it seems. But all these large organizations, they don't want to implement this point solution, because it's trying to solve only one single problem, right? These products, it's not an enterprise grade kind of product, which you can start from A and go to Z. Okay, so they are not willing to take those products which is only solving your problem of C. So it should be able to solve multiple problems. So that's where the struggles. All these startups, they are just to have a point solutions. But there are point solutions for sure, okay? So we recently met one person from the, uh from a company called actor dot A I. Okay, so that's again Hyderabad based company or startup. So once a meeting is over, it will send the minutes of the meetings. So if it is a project manager, it will send the project manager related minutes of the meetings. So if a person is a tester, then it will send the tester related minutes of the meeting, based on the discussion that happened in the project team, right? You customize and send those minutes, and if the person agrees, then it will, to create tasks also in the Jira or whatever tool that automation is using.
Yeah, that is really good.
Yeah, so those kind of tools are there, but again, you. Yeah, so those kind of tools are there. But again, you also have to think about nowadays, right? Developing a solution or program is becoming very easy, right? You are able to develop those things within two, three weeks. Because it's only the idea and the steps that you require. The coding is completely done by this Claude A or other tools. Right? The, the development accelerated so much that these point solutions, whether it makes sense to implement as a standalone is the thing that people are thinking of. So the industry has just started, right? So we have to see that maturity levels.